It's been like four years since we've been.
It's been a four year since.
I know where the next change is.
We have a little different approach.
We got to have some good things.
We're uh we got the.
I can tell you sign.
Yeah.
Oh.
And it is.
I was at a sports show for years and then when I just like go back to.
Go now.
You guys and that's continued. Big as any of you just. It's for working with us, yeah, it's super great. Really just.
Is there a recording?
Just about.
Yeah, let's get started.
You guys ready for this?
Yeah, let's get started.
Twenty years.
More than that.
Smile on your secrets.
One half.
Yep. It's over.
I'm telling you about roll.
I mean, I didn't hear you.
This be.
Just watch, so I can see no bounce back. The whole like.
Yeah. Good evening, let's call meeting Lake Park out on school board to order, let's start with roll call large. Here, call.
Here.
Jane.
Here.
Sarah.
Here.
Erin.
Here.
Susan. Here, uh let's start with one point three pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get a motion to approve the agenda? So. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Agenda is approved. One point five seating the new school board member Megan Hernandez.
Hello everyone, um I Megan Hernandez hereby accept the office of school board member of school district, independent school district number two eight eight nine for a term beginning November twenty fourth twenty twenty five and expiring the first Monday of January twenty twenty nine. And for the second part, I Megan Hernandez swear and affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state and that I will discharge faithfully the duties of the office of the school board member of the independent school district number two eight eight nine to the best of my judgment and ability.
Thank you. Welcome coming up to the table. Welcome to the school board. Just like enough, we have a full board.
Megan, do you have to go?
No.
Okay. Madam Chair, um it's wanna, it's a real pleasure to have Megan on the school board, uh have the pleasure helping coach her many years ago, so welcome to the school board.
Uh two point O public comments, do we have any comments today? Okay, thank you for all being in attendance, so uh four point O staff reports, elementary principal.
Uh yeah, just uh four things for me tonight, uh first of all, grandparents day, I do appreciate or thank you to the board members that were able to make it, I know you're all busy and you have things going on, hopefully you were there and able to witness the the amazing awesomeness that is grandparents day at LP elementary school. Uh I know I was blown away being at my first year this year, I far exceeded anything I could have dreamed or dreamt it to be, so thank you to all the staff uh for making that happen, it is truly a one of a kind event. Uh the other thing I wanted to talk about briefly is red ribbon week, uh that also happened around that time uh in October, um students, since we didn't meet uh last month, just talking about it now, but students were able to be introduced to a myriad of things, uh they had lessons on uh anti bullying as well as making safe choices, we had uh entities entities from Detroit Lakes Community College, one of the colleges there come out and talk to the kids, so it was also a really cool event that that occurred all week, so I know Lisa McCloud is is a big part of that, uh Lisa's here tonight, so thank you to her for making that happen, uh also a wonderful thing. Uh new this year, we did have a Halloween parade, I'm not sure if you were aware of that, uh it seemed to go really well.
Thank you.
Uh even though the weather was not ideal, we had a lot of people show up and it was, it was really cool for us to parade outside and and let the families and community members see all of our wonderful costumes, although mine was a tad scary, so there was that. Uh then finally, just conferences, uh I can probably say that we were able to reach all three hundred and one of our families uh during conferences, if not the two days, uh the the following days, uh able to have that communication with the families just to make sure that everyone was on the same page and and we could tell them how awesome their kids are, so. Those were kind of the four things that I wanted to highlight today, uh you can look in the board packet and see the upcoming events, again, like any of those things you want to uh be a part of, we're more than happy to have you.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Okay, four point two, middle school principal.
Um yeah, just a couple of things, this week we're kind of doing a fun end of the studio update, we're doing um advisory versus advisory in minute to win it games. And so the um studios created their own minute to win it games and we're kind of competing with each other and building some teamwork and school spirit and friendly competition with each other. And we have a foam finger that they all get and the advisory gets, so the students are pretty excited on competing with each other. Um and then the next three weeks, we're focusing on like um a lot of functional skills, organization and things like that right before Christmas, and then we're gonna try doing a um heritage Christmas um on one of our studios, so we're gonna research some different heritages and build some Christmas things around those um for Christmas theme this year. And then for parent teacher conferences, we had fifty three parents attend and then we did reach out to a lot of parents afterwards, um the ones that were not able to attend, so we had a pretty good turnout for middle school.
Thank you, Miss Sek. Uh then we have four point three, the secondary principal.
Good evening, uh the last board meeting, we uh talked about what is the pulse of the the high school and middle school, uh so we had Lakes Country come in, uh Naomi and Stacy Ramirez uh came to Lakes Country, uh they asked us to give a diverse population of our students, who uh about twenty percent of our population was chosen to go have a a survey with her, uh it was mainly on what is the pulse of school, what is the climate, what is the culture, uh what makes you successful, what can we do to help you, uh so we have those results back, uh we're working with the student council, National Honor Society, our PBS team on, uh she's gonna come back in a week and present that to us and what can be the next steps moving forward. Uh we talked about how do we get students back into our building, uh so that is kind of the main theme of of this focus group and then we're gonna continue working with our student uh school board members to have that that conversation and continue it moving forward. Uh in my packet, it has our radar snapshots, so hopefully you've been able to connect to there, every Friday at the high school we will post, uh kind of what our story is of those throughout the week, uh learning in the classroom, like this week it'll be uh if you're really up for some entertainment tomorrow, our uh National Honor Society did a food drive and I think it was rigged, but I do believe I'm getting a eye to the face tomorrow, uh so I think little uh things like that will be in our building tomorrow. Um the fine arts, uh a big shout out to our fine arts uh this last weekend, if you were able to tend the little mermaid, outstanding job by our students and our advisor, uh a lot of work, just like a sport, leading up to that piece and uh it was a, my opinion, a very fine performance that our our students were able to put out. Uh I put in there a flex day schedule, we're uh with the red act coming out with screeners with different interventions that we're, we are working with our students to help them be successful. Uh we have a hard time finding enough time in our schedule, so each Wednesday we're adding in a flex time for students that need extra help, uh with the screeners. So that's the requirements, uh mainly focusing on ELA and math, uh also working with our MCA scores, providing them with the supports that they need, then we also got a lot of kids that what they need, like to win, what they need is they're in sports, they're in different activities, they're knowledgeable, so how do you find enough time in a day so they can be in all of them, so we're able to have some knowledgeable practice, training for uh FFA upcoming state uh events, so little things like that, whether we're incorporating into the flex schedule. Uh some career opportunities, our eleventh and twelfth graders went to Barnsville, they have about thirty different vendors over there. Uh last week they went to Wappleton, our tenth graders, next week we'll go to the Harbinum and there is about hundreds and hundreds of different opportunities are, uh just trying to find finding next for each one of them. That is what is happening at the high school.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer.
Mr. Meyer.
Yep.
Uh next we have four point four, the technology director.
Yeah, Madam Chair, he's not here this evening, but I just mentioned, you know, he's constantly running around trying to get the our internet going and everything else, uh I think he does a really nice job for our district, appreciate his hard work, um I know just recently, it was last week, we got another hundred new iPads, or Chromebooks, excuse me, that was part of the budget, it's not an added cost. Uh so we finally get that figured out as well too, so. Okay. Did he have one?
Uh he didn't have one, so I'll go to the next question. Uh four point five, the activities director.
He's at practice, he's gonna be coming in with one of our student leaders here soon. Okay.
Sounds good, thank you. Uh four point six, the transportation director. Everybody read his board report? He's not here today.
No, he's not here, now I just want to reiterate too, he does a nice job, it's hard to uh you know, make sure all the routes are are going and everything else, and I'll I'll talk a little bit at the end um on my report exactly about weather related calls, uh I will use Mac extensively, uh but I'll talk about that at the end, so thank you.
Sounds good, and four point seven, building and grounds.
Yeah, we've uh, it's never a dull moment in building and grounds, of course it's time of year, uh we're getting our concession stand outside winterized, we did a few, took our volleyball down over here, we've got a few cracks repaired before the weather hits. Um the biggest thing that this fall, we did have our uh third year, three year fire um inspection at both schools, which I consider with the help of all of our uh teachers and staff, we did excellent. Uh we had eight violations, but uh the majority of those pretty quick fixes. We do have only one left in this building, and that's our door down on the end of the building, um it's gotta get replaced, has to be able, all doors have to be able to open with four pounds of pressure. So, but they got that one, that's the only thing left, elementary, the high school, we had some unique calls there, I hadn't ever had theater curtains brought up before, but we had to find specific what the curtains were made out of, where they sprayed, uh we got that handled, found the right paperwork for that that we've got twelve years ago and we're good till thirty two, it's good for for twenty years. Um the other one, um our greenhouse has to get a sprinkler system put into it, since the it is attached to our high school, the law says if you're gonna be insured for a sprinkler in every room, then the greenhouse qualifies as a room. We have two different bids coming up for that. And then our third one, which we just had done three years ago, but the wrestling mats take up twenty two percent of our wrestling wall space, we're allowing up to twenty with the mats that we have in there. So this first direction was, well, you have to tear them all down and start over. And I just asked this last week, I said, if we figure out this and we can get it under twenty percent or twenty two percent to twenty percent, is that legal, and he said yes. So now we're working with Jim and I need to get with Landon, and if we can just maybe shrink a couple mats off each corner, something like that, even if they put them up during practice, land them against the wall so they're there, they just can't be attached to to me code. So, it's definitely a learning experience, but again, my uh my hats off to all our teachers and staff did a great job.
Zick, would you mind talking, touching base on the the gravel, pier rock, whatever?
In the back?
Yeah.
We did get uh uh Wesley tried to come over and they smoothed out all our holes, um got a little bit of gravel spread around, got our dumpsters put over to the right spot off our cement, uh which is huge for deliveries, um again, it's, we've had it even in our building ground committee, endless things we could do back there to make it easier for that, um I even thought about posting a speed limit sign for our trucks. It's mainly the weight coming off of the paved area into that gravel and when you're in the trucking business, that whether you see it or not, that weight just keeps bouncing back and forth, so it ruts up our back every year. Now I'm just hoping for a good freeze, we'll keep the nice path that we have on there and then hopefully uh we will continue to spread, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam Chair, if I can, I just want to give a comment on the really good looking new rugs and the entryways, I really like them, thank you.
Thank you.
And I appreciate the creativity with the wrestling mats.
Yeah, that would have been a
Right.
right around thirty thirty five thousand if we would have had to remat.
Yes. Okay. Five point O consent agenda, can I get a motion to approve our consent agenda? So moved. Can I get a second?
Second.
Uh any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion, the consent agenda approved. Um all of our approval minutes, did you want me to read the contract approvals and resignations?
Uh yeah, please, if you want, thank you.
Yep. Five point six, contract approvals, we have Amy Nelson in ECSE, school readiness paraprofessional, Teagan Thunstrom, Raider Care Emma Bjorky, Raider Care Grace Overbow, Raider Care Justin Meyer, elementary school care professional, Cassandra Larson, elementary school paraprofessional, Eric Laundrie, part time elementary school custodian, Rachel Kohler, elementary school paraprofessional and fall music co-coordinator Hannah Muller. And in girls' basketball, we have a head coach of Kaylee Kapooch, uh JV McKenna Anderson, C team coach Grant Iniger, J uh J H coach Megan Klein, J H coach Megan Hernandez, boys' basketball, head coach Landon Schultz, JV coach Brandon Willmore, C team coach Joe Conrad. Wrestling, we have a head coach Matt Nelson, assistant coach Chris Lessard, and assistant coach of Eric Peterson. Wonder to have, wonderful to have them all join and some of them for doing another year.
Madam Chair, I just want to add this because I've seen this happen before. Um we have a new board member who is going to be paid by the school district for coaching, I just want to make sure that I think it's appropriate that that board member, if it affects them, I think they should maybe abstain from that particular vote, so that doesn't look to be any conflict of interest. Not saying that I don't trust board members, but perception may or may not always be reality, so I would like to throw that out to Madam Chair, thank you.
Sounds good. Uh five point six, can I get a motion to approve all contracts?
Make a motion.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Everybody in favor, say aye.
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 Everybody that's opposed, say nay, and if you're abstaining, just say abstain.
Abstain.
Uh aye. Um contract approvals pass. Five point seven, rec- recognize resignations and retirements. Can I get a motion to approve resignations and retirements?
So moved.
Uh can I get a second?
Second.
Um and resonate and resignations, we have Reese Hanson, school readiness, ECSE, paraprofessional. Um all those in favor, say aye, all those opposed, say nay.
Aye.
Aye. Uh all those opposed. Motion passes. Uh six point O recognitions, we have donations tonight. Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the donations?
Make a motion.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Sounds good, any discussion? Uh robotics, we have Lake Park Fire Department, five thousand dollars, Jean Haas Foundation, three thousand dollars, Team Foundation, three thousand dollars. In corporate sponsorship, sponsorship, we have Medpack Incorporated, five hundred dollars, Mabel's Park and Tab, five hundred dollars, Ask Lover Meets, four hundred dollars, Stacy Scott Counselor Realty, five hundred dollars, Michelle Bjorky, five hundred dollars, Riggles, five hundred dollars, Venom Products, five hundred dollars. In volleyball, volleyball after hours fundraiser, we have Raider Booster Club, seven hundred and fifty dollars, Stacy Scott Counselor Realty, one hundred dollars, Dewey Septic Service, five hundred dollars, Northwestern Bake, one hundred dollars for volleyball student activities. In school supplies and student aid, we have Charity Aid Foundation, two hundred and sixty four dollars for school supplies, Cormorant Luther, two hundred and thirty eight dollars for elementary school assistance, CAF, one hundred and thirty two dollars for school supplies, BTD, one thousand five hundred dollars in student assistance. In miscellaneous, we have Bell Bing for twenty five dollars for custom card donation, we have Team Foundation for five thousand dollars for school readiness donation and grant for program support and Team Foundation, we have two hundred and ninety five dollars for STEAM. Any other discussion? Any other discussion?
Thank you, everyone.
Absolutely.
Yes, absolutely, thank you, thank you for being so generous and supporting our district. Okay, all those, yeah, I said, okay, so uh did I have something to read on this one? Okay, uh then the motion passes and we are on to nothing in the old business, we have new business, we have elementary PBIS a presentation.
So first of all, we want you guys to know what our PBIS program here at the elementary school is, it's a schoolwide positive behavioral intervention and supports, is a practiced, pro- proactive team based framework for creating and sustaining safe and effective schools. And the purpose of our program here at the ele- the elementary is to improve effectiveness, efficiency and equity in our students, to improve social, emotional and academic outcomes for all students, to create a positive environment and reward students for positive behaviors. And our motto here at the elementary school is respectful, responsible and ready. And our team members are Ryan, Brittany Nordic, who couldn't make it tonight, is our community member, myself, Kristen Frank.
Lisa McCloud.
Uh Ellie Moulton was here, uh she's a sixth grade teacher, she could not make it either, uh myself.
Tammy Teach couldn't make it, she's our musical um um music teacher here.
I'm Beth Anderson, first grade teacher.
Rachel Olson, also first grade.
Ann Brassa, preschool.
Um Jackie um Godfrey fills in for our wind staff and Steve Moser, Moser is stellar.
Yep.
Alright, so our tier one systems and supports for all students, so this supports every kid in the elementary school. Um the first one on there is is one that you'll probably see a lot of the kids coming home, the green slips, um they get them if they do something that is respectful, responsible and ready, there's a different, a lot of different options underneath uh each of them, and then the new this year, um is our um wagon, I think we're gonna name it the ragan wagon, um so kids can put their green slips, um they cut the bottom off, um they get signed by Mr. Johnson, um and then they cut the bottom off, and then they put it in here, and then they get um nominations for announcements or different things like that. Um we also have a green slip day, um one day out of the year, we pick um one name out of our buckets, each each classroom teacher has a bucket, and then they get to choose something like um to be on and on to Mr. Johnson, um lunch with the principal, designing our own T-shirt, um we also use the three D printer, Miss Godfrey has been um really pumping out the three D printings lately, so um that's some of the things that they can choose from the green slips.
Awesome, um next up we have coins, this is another schoolwide, um students receive coins for quick recognition of positive behaviors that they exhibit um and each classroom teacher has a coin tube that they go into, and so it's kind, they work towards class goals, so they have four different markings on the coin tube that once you meet the first one, you get to do a classroom celebration um and one of them is like extra recess freebies, another one is pajama day with stuffed animals, popcorn and a movie, and then the last one is teacher's choice, so it's just another um way to recognize students doing positive things and celebrate as a class and kind of build that collective community.
Sure.
This is our principal.
Oh, we don't have front four, do you want to go to the student?
Sure.
Okay.
Um these are our positive postcards, each student in the school gets two a year, and so one is their, from their uh classroom teacher, and then the second one is from the kitchen staff, parents support, lane teachers, so forth. And it's just another positive way to let the kids know that you're doing an awesome job, we're thinking about them, um and we're here for them. Just move positive reach out to the student.
Well, I was um.
You kind of made me miss the Raider rally, do you guys want to talk to the Raider rally?
Yeah, Raider rally, that's getting us.
Yeah. Yeah, so we're kind of in charge of our Raider rally, and this year we're doing it a little bit differently, we have our first one tomorrow and what we're going to do is have a schoolwide assembly where we um, and we're gonna do one at the end of each trimester, and we have three Rs, respectful, responsible and ready, so this first one is to celebrate schoolwide respect, so what we have asked teachers to do is they each selected um a male or female student from their class that they have, feel they have demonstrated the trait of respect, and they will be recognized um in front of the school tomorrow with a certificate, they'll get to participate in some activities and we'll just celebrate our upcoming, but that's what I'm just covering.
We have, the N I H S comes over from the high school.
The N I H S, yes, and then N I H S comes over uh with some students and they coordinate the games, the N I H S, so.
Yeah.
We also do staff appreciation and staff recognition throughout the year with the PBIS team, so we've done um treats that go around with the cart and teachers can pick a drink and a snack to eat, we've done um lots of different things.
Meals.
Meals, we meals at conferences, we do a day of meals, we brought in a breakfast, um treats for everyone when they come in and fill out our survey for us.
Meals. To have to feed them.
Yes. Um.
Um SEL program, um this year we um have seven mindsets for one more year, um so that's the program that we use the state. Um that's a policy about the state, is that we have to have a uh social emotional learning program, and that's what we we have chosen to use this year again. Um I really like it, um and the kids really seem to enjoy it, it seems like it's more practical world things, like they watch a couple videos on um you know, with this, this week, this week we're talking about gratitude, so uh impot- or being possible, everything is possible, it's one of the the units, so things like that, um K twelve or pre pre K twelve or pre K, I think it's pre K twelve, um so we teach pre K six here, so.
Oh, second step, um that's another SEL program, and we actually purchased that before I started here, so we actually have the digital, um we're able to log into those, but um what I do is I do the bullying prevention education, so I go to the classrooms um like every other month to present those lessons to work on the bullying prevention. Um that we do have the SEL lessons available, so then if we need to supplement anything on seven mindsets, or if I need to work with students individually on that, then we have access to that program also.
We um hold monthly team meetings, um every month, last Friday of every month, we get together and talk about how things are going, change things that didn't go so well. Um the schoolwide behavior screener, and then we also do um a program here, training is called TCIT, um teacher child interaction training, and that's been doing really great, thanks here.
And just the whole program is really the focus on the positive instead of what kids are doing wrong, so we still address what they're doing wrong and 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 they still have consequences for that, but we really want to focus on what kids are doing right. And one thing, just like when we've talked about all those incentives that we do, we all work concessions, do presentations, go out and get donations, so none of that has been funded by the school district. Um in the past, we've asked for, um I think they had approved a couple years ago, up to two hundred dollars that they would give us, I mean, we've we fundraised, we had five thousand dollars coming into this year in our account, and that's all been completely fundraised by the team members, so it's not funded at all by um by the district funds, so just wanted to reiterate that or or share that part of it too. Um so that's, tier one goes to hundred percent of our kids all the time. There are some that that just doesn't quite work with, so we need to move into the tier two, and that's up to about fifteen percent of our kids. And so some of the things that we do with those students is Lakes Crisis comes in and does some small groups um on we have banana splits for kids whose parents are separated, or friendship skills, or different things that kids can participate in. Those are free groups that come from Lakes Crisis, they do that all the Becker County schools um in the area. We have a bit team behavior intervention team that meets with teachers to help with specific classroom or student behavioral needs, so we can either give them some ideas or interventions to try, if that's not working, then we can move into the next step, which would include things like the Raider Ready Room, where kids can be scheduled in there for some scheduled or unscheduled breaks, some social skills time. We've got a check in checkout program that we're meeting with kids on specific goals to say, you know, let's remember to work on respect today, or and we'll have real specific goals. That team includes um myself, our stellar person, our principal, Amanda Snyder is our MTSS coordinator, um we bring in Mark Everson, who's our school psychologist. I think if there's, am I missing anybody else on the team? Um Abby sometimes comes from Lake Agassiz, and so we have a team of people who all really focus, Justin Hoskins actually, who was our previous EBD teacher, is on that team a lot of times, so we've got a lot of minds that are coming together to work on specific skills um that we can work with kids on. We make that referral, either. We make that referral either to the problem-solving team or the behavior intervention team, um, and then work on that in a systematic way to hopefully provide interventions to teachers and students that can help them be more successful. If not, that would move into that tier three system where we'd continue more intensive interventions and that might lead then to a special ed referral, um, and looking at special ed services. But we've done everything we could to meet those needs, um, and, and hopefully find that the kids don't have a disability, but we're able to find a way that they can learn better. Um, we've got our win academic interventions, um, through the MTSS program, jumping back up to the small groups with school social worker with myself. And so either I meet with small groups of kids or individually on different skills that they may need. That can come from teacher referrals, that can come from parent referrals. Sometimes it comes from the kids themselves saying, I need some help with some of these things. Um, and then we've got our raider-ready room, like I mentioned, um, we've got that check-in, check-out, student contracts that we do with them. We work on attendance stuff with them, we do a lot of sensory tools, they have breaks that can be, um, you know, students that have like, you can see they're starting to get a little amped up, but we can give my head of students in there today that, you know, I've got a yellow break card. So then they come in and work with sensory stuff to just calm down and talk about what was going on. So they're ready to go back in the classroom and learn. Um, and then tier three is that top 5% that none of those systems are working and so we get more intensive with them. We have Steve Moser here with Stellar Human Services over the high school at Zach Pretty. Um, and we can refer kids, those, those two individuals provide, um, 100% of our services here. So they're one, um, full-time in our school district, they don't serve any of the outs, any outside kids at all. And they can do some individual small group sibling stuff, we're working on trying to get families, um, stuff with them, but there really isn't any family counseling, um, in-home family counseling in the, in all of Becker County right now. They can do more intensive individual time with me and then again, more services in our raider-ready room. And then if none of those things are working, we've got a lot of data in place to show that, you know what, we probably need to move to, um, an evaluation for specialized and look at those services first. That's our PBIS.
Any questions?
System in a nutshell.
Any questions?
No questions, but I appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you.
Early correction and intervention is key, so thank you.
I just wanna say it, like this is a phenomenal group of people. There's a reason why this school is a PBIS school of excellence. They've kind of just touched on the tip of the iceberg as far as what they do and their forward thinking and their thought processes and all of the ways that they, uh, build school climate in this building. But it's a phenomenal group of people and, and I appreciate them, I just wanted the board to know that, that they are amazing, so.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
And thank you for all your hard work.
For a question, don't you present at other places, you wanna touch base on that a little bit?
Yeah, we have in the past done, um, I've been on the team since, um, my first year here back in 14, 15, I think it was. This is my 12th year and so we've moved to, I can't, ambassador school.
Ambassador school.
Yep.
Um, so we've presented at MSUM, we've presented at BEMJ
Presented at BEMJ.
at different, um, high, or different schools for teams that are just getting started with that. We've presented like at the School Social Work Association, um, we've, the brain conference.
Brain Conference.
So we've done a lot of that and as an ambassador school, we actually get paid to go up and do that. And so then that money comes in, um, to our district for our PBIS team. And so we're considered an ambassador school again. We've had some changeover in some of our staff, so I'm kind of alone remaining. Ann has done a couple of presentations, I think Kristen has done a couple too.
Beth, Beth has.
Yeah, and Rachel has too, so we just need to kind of reiterate those, yeah.
Yeah, so. We just need to make sure that we put our right foot forward here.
Yeah, but we'd like to keep going with those presentations because I think we've done some really good things. It's taken a lot of, I mean, every year we just improve and make some changes on it, so, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, I do wanna mention one thing about the green slips. Sometimes I, I just, Mr. Johnson was just out of the office, you know, in other part of the hall or something and students come and say, brought me these green slips, I'm like, well, what do I do with these green slips? And I can just see their expression like, who's this guy? Why isn't Mr. Johnson here designing these, so? Nice work, everybody, and the, the postcards, I love the postcard idea. Um, when I was a principal, he used to send postcards out quite a bit and I think that's a great idea. So thank you for everything you do for our students here in the elementary.
Yes, thank you very much. Okay, then we have eight points, Sam's Meals for Many, presentation. Joining me.
No, he's getting distracted.
Uh, well, I should email, my computer's gonna die unless there's a dog.
Okay, I got it.
Okay. Okay.
I think it is.
Oh, I could probably, yeah, I, so I don't lose track, I'll just start talking in, once that gets up. So first of all, I'm Andrew Eklund, uh, I wear many hats for LPA, um, the band director, but for this, um, I'm also one of the NHS advisors and I mostly lead the, uh, Sam's Meals for Many, which is run by NHS, um, so a little bit of a history. Sam's Meals for Many is a, kind of like a nonprofit that started, uh, with one of our former, uh, students, Sam Besty, uh, graduating, I think, 23 or so, um. Yeah, it's been a couple of years. And he noticed, um, when he was in elementary going to school here, that there were students over the holiday break that, uh, needed help with food, 'cause they were getting, you know, at home, they weren't getting their needs met. And so he raised a little bit of money and the first year he fed two families.
Uh, yeah, he came to me as like a fourth grader and said, Ms. McCleod, I wanna do a Thanksgiving, or a Christmas meal for a family over Christmas break, so you need to get me a family and I'm gonna raise money on my church. And he came to me about a week before and said, actually, I need you to get two families, 'cause I raised too much money for one family, so I want two. So that was how we started and then it jumped from two, I think it was like seven the next year, 10 the next year. And we now, for the past three or four years, have been doing 70 families that we've been feeding the, the food for, so.
And we feed them meals for about eight or nine days, so, and it's multiple meals a day. So, um, we've kind of reached the point now where we're trying to raise about 20 to 30,000 dollars a year, um, 'cause 70 families times about $400 and so it's about 28,000 dollars a year. So, um, uh, going back to that other slide, sorry, there's, I don't know if you can make it bigger.
Sounds good.
Um, but yeah, we feed families over the whole break, um, and this, we didn't, this year it's still, it's a little bit longer of a break, but we're gonna do about nine meals again. Um, and it's about the same number of families, um, we, you know, just kinda never know. Each year it could be more, it could be less, but it's gonna be the same this year. You can go to the next slide, I don't know if you can make it bigger or not, but.
I wasn't able to make it bigger.
Okay, that's fine. Um, so you kinda see in the pictures of the next slide, they get about three boxes worth of food, some, a bag full of perishables and then some toiletries and stuff. Um, and they get some other things too, but that's the things that Sam's Meals provides for each family. Um, and the day we give all of that out, it's NHS students, we get, the day before, we go to Costco and, uh, Cashwise where we order all the food and we get a donated, uh, refrigerated trailer, truck and trailer to come up and we fill that thing up full of food and we bring it to the high school and the next day, all the NHS, NHS students, uh, pack boxes and that morning is, is organized chaos. So we get 70, you know, hundreds of boxes filled and then that afternoon, start delivering them to families. So they get it for the break. Um, and yeah, it's, it's, uh, that'll be, you know, if any of you are wanting to help that day, that morning, if you wanna come get your hands dirty, um, it's at the high school, we, we take up the, that loading bay in the custodial area.
Wednesday.
Yeah.
Andrew, I'll help again. So this, this Wednesday?
Yeah. It's, no, December or Christmas.
No, this is the Wednesday, how far Christmas was already?
I got the date later on in the presentation. Um. Uh, there's a couple of things, like, in the next slide, it's kind of, I wanted you guys as the board to kind of know some specific things. All the funds, when NHS took it over, all the funds got handled now by the school district. So before it was like its own entity.
It was a cormorant church, ran the funds through there.
And the banking side of it was done by the church, but now it's all through the school district. So, um, just so you guys are aware of that. And so all the funds we raise, we, it's all through Sam's Meals and all of that, but then it's distributed that way. Uh, we use the high school, we use our facilities. Um, the NHS students are the primary, like, they help, I'm just facilitating, they plan the meals, they reach out to businesses for donations, um, they, when it comes, I bring a couple up with the day that we grab all the food and get it all packed, so they can see that process. And then the day we're packing, those kids just, they work and they work so hard. It's, um, it's a very special day. Um, and then Lisa and our counselors, they, they help, they're the bridge between us and the, um, families who need it. Um, and so that's, that's the part that we don't necessarily decide, but you help figure that out for us, so. Um, so yeah, in ways you guys can help, awareness, you know, um, that's partly why I wanted to share this with you guys is, you know, tell the community, tell businesses, we need funding, we need, you know, awareness, so people know that this is a thing. Um, all donations, we are asking you send cash or check to the school, uh, checks made out to the school and Sam's Meals in the memo line. And packing day is Thursday, the 18th, that's when we'll, we'll get all of this. Um, and then we start delivering them about noon or 1 o'clock or that day, depending on when we get done. Um, I don't know, the one thing that I wish students could see, but they don't get to see is when the families come to pick up food, um, just the impact that we make on the community. I don't think that, I mean, there's a lot of things we do that impact the community, I think this is one of the biggest things we do. And for National Honor Society, that's like, that's why you're in National Honor Society, you're helping the people around you that need it the most and, um, yeah, I wish the kids could see that, 'cause it's, yeah, it's why we do this.
I like to ask families for, just to send me a text, that's what it means to them or, or what they think. And so I get some really nice, sometimes a little paragraph or just a couple of sentences and stuff. And so I like to share that with the kids and school board and everybody, just so everybody is aware what impact it makes on families. But we just really worry about the confidentiality, because it's a small community and so we have people coming in. Some people are fine and they wouldn't care who puts it in their car and, and it's no problem. But there are some that just are very touchy about it and just really wanna be careful and, and cognizant of, of making sure that we're not telling who's getting those meals.
Yeah, so, if you got any questions.
Any questions?
Sorry, well, is there, like, how do families sign up for this? How do they know if maybe they're new to the community or just haven't needed it in the past but may need it now? How do they get this information, sign up?
So we, what I send home is, um, in like October-ish, I send home something or I send it out to the teachers to send home and it's, actually it's about, we have like five different giving trees in the community and so I send out for winter gear, which is that BTD donation for $1,500, that's specific to winter gear. Um, and then it has the giving trees and then the Thanksgiving food program. It March kind of runs and then we ask them if they want that and if they also want the Sam's Meals for Many. So I kinda do that all on one sheet and then I've, Melissa's think, I mean, it's amazing, 'cause she put together a spreadsheet that other people can read besides just me now. Um, and that's how we ask people and then Jamie works at the high school, because we don't send it home to all the high school, but she's got her, you know, ear to the ground on what's going on and we reach out to those newer families that we can tell. Um, and, and we'll call people or text people just to say, hey, we've got this program, is this something that you would be interested in? So, um, and I think word of mouth has gotten out there a lot too, so then we'll get people that will call us or text us and ask us about it. So if you have somebody that you know of in the community, we start out with it being, um, district families so that their kids within our district. Um, there's been a couple of times where we ended up having people that had to back out at the last minute, so we've contacted some of the local churches too and maybe done like a shut-in or, or like an elderly couple or something that, that needed some food. So occasionally, some of the meals have gone to that too.
Yeah, I, I just wanna say, I have a, I just, thank you for carrying this torch. I mean, Sam is a joy-bringer, I mean, he is, he is a kid, uh, she's not a kid now anymore, he's in college. Man, um, what you guys are doing is phenomenal and I love this, thank you.
He had a dream and just the fact that it's continuing and that was when they said, well, we, you know, when Sam left, we needed to get it through the school, because the Besty family just couldn't keep it up within that church. But although the church still is a huge, huge supporter financially and all kinds of stuff with it too, so.
Yeah, they're, yeah. There's a couple of businesses, there are a lot of businesses around, but very, they help out a lot with this, um, so.
Yeah, I appreciate it, I kinda reiterate what Cole says, well, I gotta give a lot of credit to the NHS students too. I think that's great, great thing for them to work on, it's great on their resume. Hopefully that'll take them to when they become adults and, you know, so please tell NHS students, thank you from us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Madam Chair, um, by me, I think, my.
You can, 8.3 superintendent report.
Well. Yeah, so Madam Chair, I'm just so excited to see Mr. Schultz walk in with our two new student board representatives. Um, Mr. Schultz, I know you have, did you have a little activities report as well too, or no?
Um, I can answer any questions about it, I, I don't wanna eat up too much time, but if you got any questions, feel free to ask. But, um, Brody Hanson Jr., Brooke Irey Jr. as well, um, both, both very active with a lot of activities here at our school. Um, sorry for getting over here so late, we just kinda finished off our practices and stuff like that. So, um, I just wanted to bring them here, introduce them to everybody, um, before they have to go do more activities.
Mr. Meyer, would you, um, maybe have him come up and step up and just say hi and, 'cause I know how much they really like to, I know how much they really like to talk in front of people, so, or they can do it from there.
So Dr. Burke West and I, we, we met with Brooke and Brody and Lily Baca's not able to be here, uh, but they, we've had great conversations and like Mr. Schultz said, they're great leaders in, in our school, uh, have a lot of leadership capabilities. Uh, speaking in front of people, they're very nervous, there's gonna be like a thousand people here, but there's not quite a thousand, so. Or if you could introduce kind of what, what do you do in the school?
Uh, I'm Brooke Irey, I'm a junior, I play basketball, volleyball, softball and, yeah, that's, I'm just involved with a lot of activities in school and, yeah.
I'm Brody Hanson, kind of football, track, basketball, I'm at NHS, pay, and BAM.
Yeah, we're meeting again, uh, next Wednesday and then we're gonna start having those conversations and, on kind of what the, going over the surveys of what qualities our students can bring to them and then they're gonna start working with other National Honor Societies, Student Council, PAY, uh, and then just different students on, we aren't not here without them, uh, so giving them the voice and choice. So really looking forward to what, uh, this could be.
Mr. Meyer, Madam Chair, if I may, I really enjoyed our conversation, I think it was last week and I'm, I'm really excited for these two individuals here to, um, be part of the school board. So I wanna thank you again, you two, for helping out, okay?
Yes, thank you very much and we look forward to working with you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz.
And then we have 8.3, the superintendent report.
Yeah, I did, did I want, Madam Chair, I'll just make it rather quick here, but first of all, wow, that's all I gotta say tonight. The word keeps going in my head, wow, it started with the donations. I mean, for a district our size, they received all those donations, donations, that's incredible. Uh, wow, great presentation by PBIS.
Yes.
Awesome presentation, obviously, and then awesome presentation on Sam's Meals. You can see that we have educators here, right? They don't just educate during the day, right? They give of their time after school, before school, so I, wow, it just kept going through my head. So thank you to all the educators here. Um, I would like to hand out, uh, something, some of you probably were wondering, oh, thank you. You know, there are certain times throughout the school year that we could potentially go for an operating referendum or bond referendum. I just thought I'd share this with everybody, um, of course, I received a little help from somebody to give me this information, but if you look at this, um, pass around, there's some extras there if anybody wants. Okay, so there's, happens to be a timeline for 2026 special elections, right? Um, I just thought I'd share with you some different things, but, um, you can see adoption, resolution, calling, and election, okay? February 10th, there's one coming up, there's one in April, there's one in May, there's one in August, and there's one in November, okay? These are different times, there is so much information, let's just say the district, not saying we are, but let's just say the district has to vote for a referendum. There's certain parameters or timelines that we need to look at every single school year. There's certain parameters or timelines that we need to look at every single school year. Those are the only times that we can do it. And the research out there says that on a major election like November third coming up here, there's gonna be the election for the governorship, right? You don't really wanna do a referendum on a major election because everybody comes out on a major election. I'm being transparent and honest here. Um it's probably not a good time to ever have an election. Okay? So I just wanted to share that with you in case anybody was interested in seeing that. Um you know, I wanna reiterate too, you're more than welcome to come to lunch someday. Stop by, sit in the, sit in the cafeteria with the elementary students or with the high school students. Please, I'll buy you lunch, okay? If you're interested in coming and seeing what goes on at lunch, that's great. Uh also, um besides that, you know, if you wanna come and check out the school, you don't have to call me ahead of time. You can just do that. Mike Zick's got a great handle on where things are at. You wanna work with Mike, that's fine. Just wanna throw that out there.
Do you wanna come to a classroom? That's fine too.
Yeah.
Teach for an afternoon?
I wanna give you an update. I did have a communication with a company called Full Mind, Full Mind. Um actually, I'm gonna meet with Mrs. Zick and Mr. Meyer sometime this week. Uh possibility of offering some uh Ojibwe language and or culture second semester, we might be able to do that. Remember, that's a grant. Comes out of the American Indian Fund. It won't come out of the General Ed Fund. I had a very good conversation with the gentleman in charge. And actually, they offer other classes as well. It's a Minnesota certified instructor, okay? And he did say if we wanna partner up with other school districts, it'd probably be cheaper. So I just want everybody to know that I haven't forgot about that, wanna move forward on it. And also they have other things too. They offer American Sign Language. They offer Spanish and different languages like that. So if this works out in second semester, this might be something that we could potentially partner up for next school year to offer opportunities for our students. For example, I I'm really passionate about offering a language for our students. We don't currently offer that and I think that would be a great opportunity. Obviously, we have to do the best thing for our buck, be physically responsible, but if I get other some partner schools, that would be great. So I want everybody update on that. Um I tell you what. Thank you to all the teachers and the administrators and administrative systems. The conference week was really long, right? And I just wanna, I wanna, I appreciate, I wanna thank everybody who's able to go walk around old buildings. Um sometimes I just wave, people are like, why don't you wave? I'm just saying hi. Uh but thank you because it's it's a lot of work getting ready for conferences. So I appreciate that. Um we do have a meeting Wednesday at two o'clock. Now I want everybody to know I did send an email out to all staff members. I believe I've included everybody. And so that meeting will take place at two o'clock on Wednesday in Lake Park. Just so everybody knows, I have communicated with the union. Groups on that to let them know. And um once the meeting is done, staff can take off and and get ready, whatever whatever time that is, get ready for their Thanksgiving day break. Um last but not least, one of the hardest decisions a superintendent has to make besides all the COVID stuff was weather-related calls. Okay? Weather-related calls. I just want everybody to know that I'm not going to make the call on my own, but I am responsible for the call. If it's a mistake and the weather people mess up, which they will, I take full responsibility, me, for any calls. I would rather take heat for making a poor call than take heat for somebody getting hurt or killed. Matter of fact, you look up that teacher up there.
Karen Seibert, yeah.
Result of of um poor weather conditions. So I just want everybody to know that. Am I always gonna make the right call? Absolutely not. We have some weather coming in tomorrow. I've been on with the National Weather Service on some webinar, received information. I'll communicate with our bus transportation, local law enforcement and other superintendents from the storms usually come from the west. So I just want everybody to know that. If parents call up and they say, what was he thinking? Have them call me because I will, I will defend the answer. Again, I'm not gonna always be right, but I want to be make the best decision possible for the information I have at that time. That's all I have, Madam Chair. Unless board members have anything that they wanna ask?
Any questions?
Or comments?
Comments?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Nine point uh succeeding meetings, we have nine point one school board meeting, December fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, five o'clock PM, Lake Park Audubon High School Media Center. And nine point two, truth and taxation hearing, December fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, six o'clock PM, Lake Park High School, uh Lake Park Audubon High School Media Center.
Madam Chair, one last thing. The truth and taxation meeting dialogue cannot start till six o'clock or after. At five o'clock. I'm ninety-nine point nine percent sure we're gonna have the audit report on that day. Remember, I didn't wanna draft. We have to prove it. So we're looking at that. But it'll probably take up a majority of the board meeting on that night. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Sounds great.
Thank you, Board members.
Thank you. Meeting is adjourned.
Okay, okay, that's the only reason. Okay, just making sure that that. Just it's not, it's not, it's always, it's usually getting more than one day. It's it's just with the holiday action.
Yeah, we always.
Okay.
Oh, cheers.
Yes.
You know, Mr. Meyer.
Yeah.
You know, Brooks.
No, I will. I'll talk to her tomorrow. Yeah, yeah, here, here's the truth. She actually did tell me and I just.
Yeah. I love her.
And so they just kind of. And he.
You're.
Collins. Sorry, it was every time. That's what she was.
Were you releasing that? Yeah.
Okay.
I'm sure she.
Okay, anything I might always text you.
And I will, I see your.
Yeah, right.
Okay. Here it is.
Uh, I'm, that's right.
Yeah.
I. It's my fault. I should.
Reverend.
I'm all over and see.
Probably wrong. And I was.
Alright.
Earlier, it's my apartment by house. I was like. And that's why I was like, it's something I get here. I have eventually something.
Okay. So well, no more.
Yeah. No, thanks for having me.
That's that's on great.
Oh, it's.
So that's cool for us.
Let's just get set up. Um Wednesday. Muffins? Is that what's going on?
Yes. Yeah.
Who's holding that? I can do just help for.
That's fine. Come on, Riley. That's as big, but absolutely very.